Good evening. On behalf of the Commissioners and staff, I would like to welcome you to the March 14th City of Roseville Planning Commission meeting. Please put all electronic devices away at this time or on silent. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table. If you plan to speak at tonight's meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and return it to staff. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and replayed throughout the week on Consolidated Communications and Comcast. I will now call the meeting to order. Lupe, may we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Reshears, Commissioner Hagengjos,
Here.
Commissioner Jensen,
Here.
Commissioner Martin,
Here.
Commissioner Randolph,
Here.
Vice Chair Pryor,
Here.
And Chair Covington.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lupe, may we please have staff introductions?
Yes, good evening Commissioners. Lupe Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Good evening Commissioners. Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening Chair Covington and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening Chair Covington and Commissioners. Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Good evening Chair Covington and Commissioners. Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner.
And good evening Commissioners. Matt Todd, Principal Engineer.
Thank you. The public comment period is a time for anyone who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, planning commissioner, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of four items. Item 5.1, minutes from the February 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Item 5.2, Northeast Roseville Specific Plan Parcel 17, Roseville Golf Land Gel Blaster Arena, 1893 Taylor Road, for the record, file number PL 24-0036. Item 5.3, infill parcel 270, RG Automotive Conditional Use Permit, 804 Church Street, for the record, file number PL 24-0028. And item 5.4, Sierra Vista, Specific Plan Parcel FD-34 and WB-31. Development Agreement Amendments, 1600 Westbrook Boulevard and 3250 Pleasant Grove Boulevard, for the record, file number PL 24-0151. Is there anyone on the commission or in the audience who would like to pull an item off the consent calendar for separate discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
Promoted.
Okay, Commissioner Hagengjos has made the motion and Commissioner Jensen has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pryor.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Reshears.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagengjos.
Yes.
Commissioner Randolph.
Yes.
And Chair Covington.
Yes, the motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for items 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4. Next on the agenda is requests and presentations. Before we begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. First, we will hear the staff presentation, then I will take comments from the commission, then I will open the public hearing, the applicant will make a presentation, then I will open the public comment, and the public will have an opportunity to speak. Then I will close the public comment period, and if needed, the applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Then I will close the public hearing, and the commission may ask questions of staff. Finally, the commission will consider the item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request that the Planning Commission approve a request for a major project permit Stage 1 modification, major project permit Stage 2, and tentative parcel map for 1911 Freedom Way, for the record, file number PL 23-0056. Derek, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. Good evening Commissioners again. I have a presentation for you tonight on the proposed Dutch Brothers project, which is located on Parcel 49, also known as Freedom Point. The project site is located on Lot 9 of the Parcel 49 site, which is just west of the Living Spaces building. The site includes a large portion of area underneath the powerline corridor, as you can see in this slide here. The site's also adjacent to a city-owned bike trail, which is along the residential neighborhood to the south of the site, and also includes connections to the Summer Hill Park. The request before you tonight is a major project permit Stage 1 modification, which would replace the 12,000-square-foot medical office building that was planned for Pad S with a 950-square-feet Dutch Brothers coffee kiosk and drive-through. The modification would also reduce the 12,000-square-foot medical office building planned on Pad T from 12,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. The project also includes a major project permit Stage 2 to review the architecture for the Dutch Brothers kiosk, as well as a tentative parcel map to subdivide the lot into two parcels. In this slide, you can see a site plan with the Dutch Brothers kiosk located or indicated in the red building here. Primary access will be provided via a single extended drive aisle underneath the powerline corridor. The buildings and coffee kiosks will be located outside of that powerline corridor approximately 250 feet from the residential areas to the south. The double drive-through lanes are able to accommodate approximately 23 vehicles around the building and without impacting the adjacent medical office building. In this slide, you can see a proposed rendering of the building. It's rectangular in shape with a drive-through pickup window on the eastern side of the building, sorry, western side of the building. The elevations are designed with modern elements such as flat roof parapets and varying height from 20 to 24 feet. There's a 13-foot tall canopy that surrounds the majority of the building that provides shelter for walk-up customers as well as drive-through patrons. The building materials will consist of architectural panels that mimic both stucco and wood. The canopy is metal and will be painted a complementary tan color to match the wood paneling. Stone veneer is also proposed around the base of the building and along several of the columns that will tie it in with other buildings in Freedom Point, and the tan colors are complementary to the rest of the Freedom Point Center as well. The blue accent color for Dutch Brothers provides some brand identity, but also there are other similar blue tones throughout the Freedom Point Center. An addendum was prepared for the project to evaluate the environmental impacts. This project does include a decrease in the overall medical office square footage, as we previously discussed, while adding a small retail portion to the overall site. A short-term traffic study was prepared for the project, which evaluated the project's impact on Washington Boulevard and the Freedom Way intersection, as well as site access and queuing. The study found that the project will actually generate fewer trips than the medical offices. In addition, the project will not affect the driveway functions at the Freedom Point, and queuing is expected to be contained within the drive-through with Dutch Brothers. A site-specific noise study was also prepared to evaluate the vehicle and customer noise from the project site on the surrounding residents, and there was found to be no noise impacts as well. As far as public outreach, the applicant did hold one neighborhood open house on January 10th of this year. There were no residents or other public in attendance at that neighborhood open house. One comment letter was received from an adjacent resident to the south of the site, based on the public noticing for the first Planning Commission hearing that was distributed in February. This letter was basically in response and had raised concerns about the air quality impacts of the proposed facility with the idling vehicles in the drive-through. These effects were discussed in the air quality analysis of the CEQA addendum that was completed for the project, which is Exhibit A to your staff report. In summary, while the drive-through uses will create an increase in idling vehicles, they do not have a localized hotspot carbon monoxide or toxic air contaminant impact on air quality that exceeds allowed thresholds. Therefore, no further environmental review is warranted. The project was also sent, notice of the Planning Commission hearing was published in the Roseville Press Tribune, as well as distributed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site and posted on Arcona's website. To date, no further comments besides the one letter has been received. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, general plan, and the community design guidelines, the site's appropriately designed, and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and the required findings of fact can be made. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission consider the addendum to the Bayside Church Top Golf mitigated negative declaration, adopt the findings of fact, and approve the major project permit Stage 1 modification subject to the conditions of approval, as well as adopt the findings of fact and approve the major project permit Stage 2, subject to those conditions of approval, and finally, adopt the findings of fact for the tentative parcel map, subject to the 50 conditions of approval. And that's all I have for you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Derek. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question. Hours of operations are 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Correct.
And the noise study indicated a noise decibel of like 49, and I believe it says the nighttime noise allowance is 45 with an allowance of 3 plus or minus. So it's over by 1.
So it's actually the ambient, existing ambient noise within the area in the nighttime, plus 3 decibels.
Okay. So what was the ambient then?
Let me pull up the noise study while...
As you're getting it, because was there a request for hour changes? I just, typically Dutch's are 24 hours if they can be, so that's why I asked.
Because of the adjacency with the residential neighborhood, we wanted to make it consistent with what we did at the Blue Oaks Retail Center just down the street, so Dutch Brothers was okay with limiting the hours.
That's fine. You don't have to look it up then, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. All right, I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the commission.
Good evening, I'm Chris Stewart on behalf of the applicant and Dutch Brothers. I don't have anything further to add to Derek's presentation. We're in agreement with the hours, Commissioner Martin, and we hope you'll support the project. I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the representative at this time? Okay, thank you. You may be seated. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the commission on this item? Okay, I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, any additional comments or questions? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we consider the addendum to the North Central Roseville Specific Plan Parcel 49, Bayside Church, Top Golf mitigated negative declaration, adopt the two findings of fact, and approve the major project permit Stage 1 modification subject to the five conditions of approval, adopt the two findings of fact, and approve the major project permit Stage 2, subject to 70 conditions of approval, and adopt the three findings of fact, and approve the tentative parcel map, subject to 50 conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Martin has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Randolph.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pryor.
Yes.
Commissioner Reshears.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagengjos.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
And Chair Covington.
Yes, the motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Next is item 6.2, a request to approve an administrative permit for 161 South Lincoln Street, for the record, file number PL 23-0358. Kenny, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, good evening again. I'm here to present an administrative permit for the place addition. The project site is a .23-acre parcel located in the infill planning area at 161 South Lincoln Street. It is zone 2 family residential, or R2, and it has a land use of low-density residential. The property is developed with an approximate 1,600-square-foot two-story home and a 380-square-foot detached garage, and is surrounded by other single-family The applicant is requesting an administrative permit to add an approximate 1,500-square-foot two-story addition to the north side of the property, which is highlighted in the area on this slide. The existing detached garage will be demolished and replaced with an attached garage as part of the addition. The addition will also include a bonus room on the first floor and three new bedrooms and a bathroom on the second floor. The addition meets the R2 development standards, including setbacks, block coverage, height, and also parking requirements will be met by providing one space within the proposed garage and one space in the existing driveway on the south side of the property. This driveway is long enough to provide a parking space behind the 20-foot front yard setback, which is consistent with the zoning ordinance. The existing front and back elevations are shown at the top of this slide, and the proposed elevations with the addition are shown on the bottom. The addition will raise the building height by approximately 6 feet to an overall height of approximately 26 feet. Staff finds this is in scale with other homes in the neighborhood, as several of them are also two stories, including the homes across the street and to the right of the property. The addition will use the same colors and materials as the existing home, which include a smooth stucco finish painted beige, white wood trim, and gray combshingle roofing. And to visually tie in the addition to the existing roof line, two new dormer elements will be added on the existing roof on the front elevation. The nearest residence to the addition is a property located to the north at 159 South Lincoln Street. This property is developed with a single-story home and a setback approximately 12 feet from the shared property line and approximately 17 feet from the proposed addition. As shown in the street view, there is existing mature landscaping on this property, which will provide a visual buffer of the addition. The combination of landscaping and setbacks will minimize visual impacts. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website, and typically administrative permits are approved at staff level, but in this case, a request for a public hearing was received by the adjacent property owner at 159 South Lincoln Street. The owner is in opposition due to concerns with the size and location of the addition. However, as mentioned in the previous slides and as evaluated in the staff report, the addition does meet the zoning ordinance development standards, and the setbacks and existing landscaping will reduce visual impacts. And notice of tonight's hearing was published in the Press Tribune, distributed to a 300-foot radius, and posted on the Arcona website. In conclusion, staff finds the addition is compatible with the existing character of the property and the neighborhood. The project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance and general plan, and the required findings for approval can be made. At this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the three findings of fact and approve the administrative permit, subject to four conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Kenny. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the commission.
Good evening, my name is Jacob Pleiss. I have nothing further to add to the presentation, but welcome. Any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the representative at this time? Okay, thank you. You may be seated. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission about this item? Please return it to staff and then also state your name for the record.
I haven't done this in a while, so forgive me if I stutter. My name is Della Tubbs, and I live at 159 South Lincoln Street, and I've owned that property now for about 14 years. I moved to Roseville about 28 years ago. Was freshly single mom with three kids, and I've studied Roseville before I moved here, and I fell in love with old Roseville. So the reason I come to you tonight is because I know Jacob, I appreciate the fact that he's got four little kids and he needs a bigger place, but the idea of changing the look of the street, and I didn't get a notice when this started about a year ago, and Jacob went to you guys and he started the street change, which meant he took two parking spots from the street. We live on a very jammed street. It's a one-way. It's a historical street. My home is 97 years old. It was built by a railroad engineer. All of our homes along there are old, built in the 20s. We have a farmhouse that was built in 1923, '28. And everybody since I've been there has, in renovations, changed the insides. We're long, narrow lots. We either face east or we face west, and these homes were mostly bungalows, California bungalows. My garage wasn't even built until 1950-something on mine, in the back. We had no alleys. So when you're driving up the street, and it's a narrow street with parking on either side, over the years, with these buildings, building them in the back, not disrupting the front, but building in the back, has added apartments throughout the street. So it's really made it very difficult for people just to come visit and park in the street, because it's filled with tenants and owners. In Jacob's case, he came in, he had a long driveway, he could tandem park like everybody else does, and instead went to you guys without my knowledge, and what happened was, is I saw them out marking the street, getting ready to tear up the sidewalk, and I said, "Whoa, what's going on?" "Oh, we're putting in a driveway." He's already got a driveway. All the streets are... We have driveways that aren't even driveways yet. There's still gravel on this street, okay? He now has three parking spots across the front of his house. His lot is only a little less than a quarter, mine's a little less than a quarter. They're long and narrow. They're not wide, okay? He happened to have one of the last lots that hadn't been built on to. My house is actually not single. I have a front bungalow, and I have a back apartment, and it's long and narrow. So my yard from my front bungalow sits right there, and it's only about 15 feet wide, okay? That's it. So if he puts up this massive structure, and it will be massive in that 27 feet or 25 feet, it's going to be massive, and it's taller than his existing house, and it will be taller than my house. It will invade my natural light. It will invade my privacy. His window, one of his bedroom windows, looks down in all of my bedrooms, and my bath, and my living room. And I've explained this to him. I've asked him to please reconsider. I gave him a drawing. I've had years of space planning, architectural drafting, and I gave him a little sketch and said, "Why don't you put this in the back? Use the existing garage or build a new one. Add an upper addition to it. You've got plenty of room. You don't have to do this." This is what his new plan looks like versus all... This is what his new plan looks like versus all of our bungalows. Now, the congestion that has started because of his parking or taking that driveway, we used to have five small cars could fit along between our two houses. He now has a spot in the middle of his two parking spots, it's a small car, and only two spots now left in front of my house that are small cars. The problem is, we have SUVs. One will pull up and another one will pull in, they won't pay attention, they're blocking my driveway, sometimes by a whole tire. And I've dealt with this, it's like, okay, but now I find out about this simply because Jacob brought me over a schematic of what was going on and said, "Hey, I'm getting ready to do this." And I said, "Whoa, whoa, wait." So immediately I called Planning Commission, and I said, "I haven't received anything about this, and now this is going on." And I'm frustrated, I don't...
Della, we're gonna have to ask you to...
That's fine, but you get my point, I hope. This is really heartbreaking to me, and he has an alternative. He doesn't have to put this on the street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Please state your name for the...
My name is Susan Sparks, and I'm a renter in the house that's on the other side of Jacob's property. I've lived there probably about three years, and he is constantly working on his land and on his house. He's very meticulous, he works right up to within an inch of the property line, trying to use all the space as possible. With four growing children, I think this property is probably not in their best interest. I think he would be coming back to you in five or 10 years to build something else, to accommodate his family and his extended family. I would suggest that he's also, along with other people on the street, trying to change the dynamics of the old downtown historic center that we live in. And I've lived downtown for 25 years, and I hate to see this happening to the community. I think you should deny this application and let him find a larger piece of property where he can have his large vehicles that he carries his kids around in, and his pickup truck, and find a place that's better suited for his family, and let the historic sense of this downtown community remain as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? I will now close the public comment period. May I ask Jacob if you'd like to address any of the comments? Okay. Commissioners, or I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments for the applicant or staff at this time?
I have a couple little questions. I'm looking at the exhibit and the pitch of the new building compared to the existing building. It looks like it's got kind of a high roof on the existing single story. What's the difference in height between the two-story piece and the single-story piece?
Six feet, right? I thought the report states 20 foot six is existing and 26 foot plus or minus.
Okay, six.
About six feet, five and a half, six feet.
And the other question I have, and I'm looking at the exhibit that's in the staff report, and it's showing the vegetation that's along the property line. It appears that that vegetation is pretty close to what the height of the new building would be. Is that a fair statement that it's close? Plus or minus four or five feet?
Yeah, I would say the vegetation is probably about 20 feet tall.
Okay. And then the last question, the five-foot setback that's between the property line and the house, that meets current city standards, it's pretty consistent with...
Pretty much our standard R1 zone is five feet across the board for an interior lot, yeah.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
That's, I think, sort of the same question I had, which is, as the application is before us, there is no ask for any kind of variance of any of the standards that apply to this property, correct? It's all within what the existing regulations provide.
Right, so he meets all of the development standards that we have for the zoning, the R1 zoning, but what he's asking for is because the addition is large, and we have the requirement for any addition over 700 square feet needs an administrative permit.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. The vegetation at the side of the property, whose property is that vegetation on?
I believe it's the neighboring property at 159.
The neighboring property, okay. And the other question is, when was this house originally built? Does anybody know?
My house was 1930.
No, this house.
1925.
1925, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Just one other, I guess, clarification. The five-foot setback, that's been a code item in our city standards for quite some time. It hasn't changed recently.
No, yeah. Since at least 1995 was when our new zoning code was adopted, so it's been at least since then.
And that's for single-family, two-family homes going back decades, that's a typical setback, side yard setback.
Right.
For like near purposes.
Okay, I have one clarification. There was a comment that no notice was shared out with the neighbors, but it sounds like in the staff report that the notices were made, so just a clarification on that.
I'll jump in real quick, I think there's a couple things. There was, the addition of the driveway, there was an encroachment permit that was issued by our engineering department. That is not a noticed, it's a ministerial process, so that was not noticed. When the applicant began talking to us, you know, we don't send out notices until we get closer to a hearing. In this particular instance, this project is eligible to be approved at the staff level. So the typical noticing procedure for staff-level approval is we send out notices to everybody within 300 feet, and we let them know, if you want a hearing before the planning commission, you have 10 days to submit a request. In this instance, Ms. Tubbs contacted us before we even sent out the notice. We did, we had early communication, we made sure the applicant talked to his neighbors, let them know what was going on. So we made the call, we're not going to send out a notice of intent to approve, because we know somebody wants a hearing. So we just went straight to noticing for the planning commission hearing. So there was a notice that was put in the paper probably 14 days ago tomorrow, so 13 days ago today, and the notices were mailed out a little bit earlier than that as well. So all the legal noticing was done correctly, and, you know, as typical with administrative permits, and residential neighborhoods, when folks are doing work on their own house or having work done on their own house, we ask them early on, "Go talk to your neighbors," because we know that there can be issues that pop up. So, yeah, as early as somebody would have known something was going on, the word was getting out.
Excellent. Was there any other comments you wanted to make?
I guess one thing I just wanted to point out, and I think Kenny may have touched on it, and I know the staff report touches on it, but just to make sure folks know, 35 feet is the height standard for this zone. So, you know, there aren't very, I don't know that there's any homes on this street that come anywhere near that, there're probably nothing that's above 30 feet tall. So a 26-foot-tall home is definitely typical for this zone, and can be, you know, a little bit on the shorter side in some areas, depending on the architectural style.
Thank you, Greg. Any other last comments or questions from the commission?
I just have a comment that I hear what the neighbors are saying, and I do feel for them. Part of that is a result of some experience I've recently had, where within our own home, our neighbor had this beautiful tree that provided all kinds of shade for our front porch, and I used to just love sitting on our front porch at all times of the day, because the sun didn't really come through, that tree shaded our porch, and one day I came home and that tree wasn't there. But that tree was on my neighbor's property, and there was nothing I could do about all of that. When you buy a piece of property, you're allowed, within the regulations that exist, you're allowed to do what you're allowed to do on that property. And I feel for the neighbors, but I also think that we live in a society where we have to allow the things that are permitted within the rules. That's how we live as a society, so I just wanted to offer that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other last comments or questions from the commission? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the three findings of fact and approve the administrative permit subject to four conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Vice Chair Pryor has seconded the motion. Roll call, please. Yes, Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Randolph?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashiers?
Yes.
Commissioner Haganjos?
Yes.
And Chair Covington? Yes, the motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Next on the agenda is the commissioner and staff report. Are there any reports from staff?
Chair Covington, I'll just give you some insight on future meetings. I just want to let the commission know that right now, we're a little bit slower on application process, the number of applications that we're currently working on, and for a variety of reasons, we're just, the volume of projects getting ready to be heard, aren't there. So our next meeting will probably not, well, not probably, will not be until April 25th. So the next two meetings, we don't have items for. And then April 25th, we are bringing forward a zoning ordinance amendment, so we've got some cleanup items, you know, as we've been doing every year for the last several years. Luckily, the California Legislature is active enough that they give us an annual zoning ordinance update to work on, so we have some zoning ordinance language to bring to you, kind of cleaning up our zoning code, making sure we comply with just recently adopted state laws and a few other cleanup items. But actual projects, we're just a little bit slow right now. I think we have some that are in the pipeline that, you know, probably be a little bit busier in the spring and summer, but it's gonna be a little bit slow going the next couple of months.
Thank you, Greg. Any last comments or questions from the commission? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second. Sorry, can someone second? Commissioner, Vice Chair Pryor has made the motion, and Commissioner Martin has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.